Welcome, everybody, to the December 2022 Rachel Publicity Commission meeting. Let's have a quick roll call of commissioners and attendants. I know we don't have a uniform right now, let's do a quick roll call. Um, hold out our hall chair.
Are we in the meeting?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Alicia Sitt.
Steven Johnson.
Reverend Davis.
Reverend Davis.
Now, let's go to Commissioner Edward online.
Steve Andrew online.
We have Luna Benuria.
Do you have any other commissioners online who introduce themselves?
Valentina. Commissioner Mala.
I'm sorry, is that me?
Veronica Mala online.
Alright, welcome, everybody. We'll start with open dialogue and during this portion of the meeting, commissioners can raise topics, discuss current events, or any any issue that may impact in order to influence the commission's work overall. No action be taken during this portion of the meeting. Does anybody have any topics for open dialogue? Seeing none, we'll go over to public comment. One, do we have anyone online who can pull a comment?
Um. Is it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because we should never hide it. I'm first.
Anyone present for pull up comments?
In the book? Yeah. Okay. They're all working for you?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Oh.
Oh.
So.
Pull up comments?
I was here to to watch. I've been helping with procedures and Allison with this other thing we discussed before. Oh. Like, it was in the back.
Oh.
We're working right next to talk. We're going to compete together. So just support and just.
Oh, great. Well, thank you. Okay, so stay in open comment. That's welcome. Please join us. It's wonderful. Happy. Okay, we're going to skip over the open on adoption of minutes. It's what we have for him when he starts talking during this. Sorry. Anyway, let's move over to the Salt Lake City Police Department update. Chief Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
You're up.
Okay. Well, commission, thank you. It is really good to be with you again. First, let me introduce, no stranger to this group is Catherine Events. Thank you for being here. If you all know, the new executive officer who filled in for that, Andy Club. Myself, we're, it's really nice to be with you. Tonight, I really just wanted to go through all the recommendations that we have put forward. You've helped us and talk about where we're at, kind of bring you up to speed, and then where we need to go and where we need to put our emphasis moving forward. So with that, I've got a presentation, but let's make this kind of an open discussion, not just me. I want Andy and event. You guys jumping in too, because you've been very instrumental in a lot of the work here, so. Okay, with that, let's go to the next slide. We, last year, and event kind of spearheaded this, you put together the PowerPoint of all the objectives that we had listed out in our final report. And we reported last year in 2021 and talked about the things we had accomplished. And, and commission, I want you to know, we've accomplished it. We really have. A lot of hard work, a lot of good conversation, and I do thank you for your efforts, for always being at the table with us, to help us to improve this, our police department in the way we serve our community. So thank you. Next slide. Okay, this is the update on the commission. We'll call this, last year was the first phase. This will be the second phase on the report. Any questions before we move into that?
No, but Commissioner Eldridge is in online, so we have four.
We should.
One name, though.
Uh, Chief Brown, you mind if I, or if you please to approve the minutes and adopt them?
Yeah, you bet.
That would be great.
I'm moving to include those minutes.
I just want to ask you really quickly, we don't want to lose anybody on the line. So let's take a brief pause and has everybody online in person had a chance to review the November 2022 meeting minutes? Uh, does anyone have any amendments to those minutes? We have a motion to approve those minutes.
I'm I'm moving to approve the amendments. Second.
Yeah, Commissioner Reverend, okay. Thank you so much. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion carries.
Would, do you want to just, uh, final end of your after? Thank you, just in case you need to input anything that Chief has.
Let's, yeah, yes, let's do that. Okay. Alright, Chief Brown, sorry to interrupt.
Okay. Listen, you've heard us talk about this whole process has never been one of one and done. We were never going to check a box, things that are good, that we need to do. We wanted to make sure that we be followed through. We build them into our department. We continue with the best practices that we've talked about here in this commission. And I want you to know, those recommendations that we talked about last year. They're in place and they continue today. We've, we've, we've taken those into our organizational structure, how we do business, and I want you to know that we, we continue those today. So today, you'll see on the next slide here. Everything on the left are things that we completed in 2021. That color code of those boards, green means they're good and they're going. Does anybody want to, you want to run through those or you want to focus on what we accomplished this year?
Let's go to what we accomplished.
Yeah.
Okay. On the right, those are the recommendations that we completed in 2022. We have expanded the field training officer positions in the, in the, remember when we talked about that? Next slide. Next slide. When we first dealt, dealt into the FTO program, I think we had 77 FTOs. Those are field training officers. Those are the officers to take out the new recruits and teach them how to be police officers. Seventy seven. We now have, recommendation was to to build that up. We have 103. And the recommendation was to look for diversity within the police department and value that diversity and bring them forward so that they can teach that within the organization. We have 14 officers of different ethnic backgrounds represented, which is, which is really good.
What was it before? You know?
The. Have that.
No, I think it was pretty, it was a lot less than that, but we were also having issues because of how was put into HR. I mean, they had me as a white woman in there, so I was like, oh, that's wrong, I need to fix it. So we actually reached out to officers this time, said, hey, can we tell us if we have any other ethnicities besides Caucasian, Caucasian, and yeah, and they did, so.
How does that happen?
Uh, Latino, they're sometimes considered white.
Yeah. There's no box. When you look at it, it's either black, Caucasian.
Asian.
Asian, yeah.
Native, yeah.
Well, Pacific Highlander, Hawaii, yeah, more relevant to white ones, and it's, I know. Yeah.
With no rush.
Yeah, I thought we don't consider us of light, but many, some do. Sometimes we do consider us of light.
Wow.
So we fixed it and we were able to reach out to the department this time to make sure we got an accurate number. And our HR team is great, making sure that it was correct on their profiles for, you know, if anybody wanted to pick it up themselves.
So, yes, track much better. We, we, if our records are bad on that, so a great recommendation, and I, I hope you're happy with where we're at. We're not done. I want you to know, we'll continue to push for more FTOs and more diversity.
How do you target the diversity of the go accurately?
Well, I think when you value diversity, it becomes part of what you do. And, and we've put it out to the entire police department. But we, we want great FTOs from all backgrounds to help train our, our cops. I think some of the work we're doing here is helping that very thing.
What I'm saying is, I know, I know, you came to Calvary one time, and Pastor Davis was there. I mean, do you make it a point to make some of those visits to some of those places in the Black community? Say, hey, you know, we're, we're hiring, we need some people.
Absolutely, yeah. COVID has been difficult.
Yeah.
There's a lot of the things that have been shut down, but that was one of the first things when I went to visit Pastor Davis. I was a young chief back in 2015. And I said, hey, Pastor Davis, thank you. I'd known Pastor Davis for years, and I said, hey, I'd really like to build this relationship and further our partnership here with Calvary. And he had his classes on, and he goes, you know how Pastor Davis does it, looks over the top of his class, says, chief, we've been here 42 years. Where you been?
Very big.
Not a question.
So that was a, that was lesson learned right there. So, yeah, you can't just show up once, once a year. So we've come back and do Trump retreat. We've done youth outreach. We play basketball. So, yeah, it, it helps fairs. There's a lot of things we're doing.
Awesome.
Okay, the next one was recruitment. You asked that we, we look at our recruitment, who we're, who we're bringing into the department, some of the questions we ask, the processes and things like that. I wanted to know, we've taken those to heart. We've, we've brought people from our community to sit on our hiring boards and our promotional boards. In fact, some of the rep commissions have actually been in and sat with us as we're hiring new recruits. So I think Kenny has done it. Have you done it, Commissioner?
I've not, no.
That's good to hear.
But anyway, it's good because they bring it in a perspective and they look at the process, and we realize sometimes we think a little bit myopic, and it's better to look broader. Because a good candidate is not always the person who knows everything about law enforcement. A good candidate is somebody who has a good heart, is compassionate, and wants to do this job for the right reasons. And another one that you guys recommended was to hire a recruiting specialist. Alana Ham, um, Lam. I just killed that. I'm sorry.
Stop sharing.
Yes, stop sharing. There she is, right there.
Hello.
Alana, thank you. Yeah, please introduce yourself to the commission.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Alana. I am into my third month with Salt Lake City, which has been super exciting, and so far, I'm having a blast. Everybody's been fantastic. Um, I grew up in Los Angeles. My family is from Canada, and so a lot of experience working with a lot of different people from different backgrounds, and it's a great opportunity to come work with you guys.
Thanks, Alana, for being here. Thanks for being part of our team.
Sure thing.
She works, she works really close with Jessica Weaver in HR. She works really close with Josh Harrison, our, our background team, our recruitment team. They go out and they do a lot of job fairs, military recruitment events. She's got a lot of plan for us, and I think we're going to do great work. Well, thank you, Commissioner. Next slide. We've talked a little bit about that. Steve just sat in recently, and he talked about it last week when he said in our, not only our hiring processes, you've been involved in, but he sat in a promotional committee as well. I think Kenny's done the same as well. So, again, thank you for, you know, being involved in what we're doing. Next slide. The next slide talked about recommendations to our mental health and our co-responder teams. In this day and age, that's a big deal for our police department. Andy, Andy's been involved in that. The XO typically heads up the mental health team within the department. And that kind of spearheaded it and got it going, so I'm going to turn it over for you to give us a little update on that.
Absolutely. Delegation. You're good. We, I oversee the, one of those for the officers, the peer support team in the department right now. We do care about our officers, and we realize that there are a lot of events that there's trauma that's, that comes with responding to those different types of events around the city. So we want to take care of them. As part of that, we hired one mental health clinician who offers therapy for our officers. An ear for anytime they need to talk to somebody. She's fully stabbed, so she can come anytime. She's available for callouts. And then we also have a peer support team of two full-time peer support officers, and then several collaterals that we can call out anytime there's a critical incident. So officer involved shootings, morning custody deaths, anything where our officers or the public have experienced trauma. And we try to take care of our officer to make sure that they're getting the support that they need and the resources that they need to try and deal with that trauma again as well. As part of that, we're continually trying to expand our program so that we can care for them better every day. So we've started to reach out to other agencies, universities, looking for research-driven programs that we can continue to bring back to the department to make that wellness and support for the officers a little bit better.
So I'm guessing two full-time peer support professionals is not enough.
They're actually officers.
They're officers, and, and we love the work they do. They actually do a great job of helping me coordinate the efforts of the other collateral officers. But as far as what they do, I think that is pretty good for our program right now. What we're looking to expand more in the future is our licensed clinical.
How many do you have?
Currently, we have one, yeah.
For how many officers?
Five hundred and ninety-seven. Uh, please not.
That's not.
No, we're looking at getting at least maybe two part-time.
What's the timeframe for getting two part-time?
So I'm looking at funding one here, hopefully in the near future, the next couple of months, and then we're looking at potentially hiring another part-time licensed clinician later on in the future. Um, we are also looking at expanding the internship opportunities for volunteers to kind of get their clinical hours in assisting with the.
Which is great for short term.
Yes.
For sure. What kind of messaging is going out to the officers?
Uh, so our peer support officers send out regularly, you know, and correspondence with all the officers for services that are available, the AP program through the city. And, and anything else that we're doing. Right now, we're doing it over with our first responders. So those communications go out regularly. Every Wednesday, we have a meditation session that is.
In person or online?
In person or online. So those communications go out as well on a weekly basis.
But you're right, one is not enough.
No.
No.
She is so busy.
And they bring a lot of training in as well to help them there, seeing a lot of issues recurring. They try to bring a change. I mean, there was even a training for, do you have an adolescent team? You know, they're, they're able to work.
That's common itself.
Right. So, I mean, they're working with other organizations who are willing to volunteer their time to come in and provide training for free, you know, and you do have the grants that help, you know, believe it, some of that, but. Grants, as you know, are very difficult to work with, and they only last for so long, so that full-time funding is the, is a difficulty.
Right.
Um, but the chief and the chief's office is always promoted wellness, and that's what we're trying to be ahead of again this now, instead of be proactive in peer support, we have a one as component as well, promoting, hey, it's okay. Ta-da. It's okay.
What's been the response? Has it been positive? Is there still some pushback? Because I, if, if you guys are anything like lawyers, will resist it to the very bitter end.
I think in the beginning it was, but you, you know, being on Pioneer Patrol, I hear people talking about it, and I have people come up to me. Because we were, we are actually teaching a peer support hour in our in-service class, which is annual training, and we provide to the officers. And so some of us that taught it would share our story. And I think coming from a command officials area, your story really allowed officers to realize, hey, I'm wrong. And Jamie has told me that what we've done is really getting people to break that statement.
So you're seeing a positive response to the messaging?
Absolutely. It's becoming more and more mainstream for officers to speak up. Jamie Walter's license.
And we're actually, we've incorporated wellness checks as well for certain special units, where we see more trauma than other officers do.
Yep.
Um, and detectives in those units and victim advocates, yeah, special victims homicide, the car team, which is the crash response team, and then our victim advocates, they were kind of our test, you know, to see where women. Their command staff and the detective who would like, thank you, would need this, so it's, once we can get more staffing, I've already told, I would like Pioneer to be the first.
You guys see.
To go through it and just, you know, hey, we want you to go through, you can sit there, not say anything, but it's, it could have been a longer.
Alright.
That's it.
Please keep that, because I did on that one.
It is.
It is. And thank you. You've always pushed for that. We do need more help. I, we had our Christmas luncheon yesterday, and Jamie Welch, our clinician, came up and gave me the guidance. He said, thank you for all you're doing, but I need more help.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, you need probably two more full times.
So.
I guess.
We may come back to an ask for you, but thank you for your support as always.
Of course.
Can you talk about the social workers?
I think.
No.
Steve has a.
Yeah, would it be, I'm, I'm. Being online is a little awkward. I'm sorry to interrupt you there, Chief. Is this in-house response in addition to like EAP employees' programs?
Yes, this is a full-time clinician that is hired by the Salt Lake City Police Department in-house. Yeah.
And then.
The ER.
Are there also out of, out of house resources in addition to this?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think, I really like that. I think I can see a path for the in-house clinician and for those interns to be able to have relationships and inroads with officers, and can have those conversations, kind of identifying those that might need a little more assistance or long-term assistance, in which case they have a path outside of the agency, get that additional treatment. And I've seen real success with that in-house for those moments of. And start to process those early, which I think data shows generates better outcomes. So I, I think, if I'm understanding it correctly, it's important to look at this program in addition to other layers of programs that the city also provides. It's more of a holistic approach in that way. And then just to comment on the the clinicians getting their hours, I think that's really exciting because, and those clinicians can have an understanding of the law enforcement culture as well, which can help give them a good back when they go out for the rest of their careers. So I'm really excited about that program.
Yeah, no, it's a good program. I do think we need more diversity in there because one of the barriers for full color is having conditions of color for me, where they don't have to explain the struggle to. And that, that's one of the bigger barriers to people who are accessing mental health issues is having to explain why we're feeling the way we're feeling. And if you don't have to go through that extra step, it makes it easier for us to access those services. So that's my only concern. I know you have Jamie Welsh, but yeah, we do need to expand that. And also for, for men, there's some men that respond better to male clinicians.
Yeah, true.
Because same thing, you don't have to explain the journey to a woman who might understand, at least not at the outset. So we got to make sure that we're very sensitive to the officer's needs for both male and black.
Yep.
Okay, you want me to go into mental health?
Yeah, talk about that here.
Uh, so moving on as well, one of the recommendations was to expand our co-response teams to hire more licensed clinicians.
Yes.
So we have continued to hire, fill our vacancies within the social worker and co-response programs. Currently, we have one licensed clinical social worker. We have nine active social workers and then three detectives that are assigned. We have a fourth FD that's approved for us. Staffing pending will fill that, so we'll have four detectives that are assigned full-time to that co-response team. There are four clinician vacancies right now, with two in the hiring process as we speak, so they're looking at as many as we can. It's just, we're competing against all the other agencies that are trying to hire licensed clinicians as well.
And they're hiring some at ninety thousand a year.
Absolutely. So it's getting a little bit difficult for them, so they're looking at ways around that as well. Um, so right now, I know it says seventeen full-time. I think it's nineteen, correct?
Right, we have nineteen. But, yeah, we, we're trying. Social workers in high demand, University of Utah, last time we checked, they had fifty-five vacancies, and they paid probably the most in the state.
Yeah.
So it's really difficult.
Yes.
It is.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
They're paying astronomical amounts of money for a woman now, which makes me think we should switch back to somewhere.
Absolutely. So of our nineteen full-time responders on the team, currently five of those are people, uh, people of color, right? Eight of them are men, which is kind of unusual for the social work dynamics, so we're, we're excited about that. And then nine of them are women as well. With many diverse backgrounds, diverse ages, as well as sexual orientation in our social workers.
Have you ever met our social workers?
I have not. I would love to be.
One of these times we should bring them to the meeting to talk about. They're, they're very, they really are very.
I like such characters.
They finally, they've been living in our basement, so to speak. We didn't have a shop for them, so they came, they came over and they were housed in our, our police department. And it was kind of, it was difficult because when they're treating people and clients, and you say, hey, well, I'll meet you at the police department, some people say, come in the police department. So we just opened up their new location over here on West Temple.
Yeah.
At about, well, tenth south, yeah. So we have a new location. We're going to probably cut the ribbon next January, so we'd like to invite you over to see that as well. That might be a good time where you can come see up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you know, do you have a cup of coffee inside? It's just. More to that.
It's a little.
Clear that out.
Yeah. So, okay, okay.
So they're pretty happy. They're out of the basement. Absolutely. So because we have all those full-time bodies, now they were able to expand their hours in range of service, so they're currently servicing six days a week, working towards servicing seven days a week. Um, but from shifts from ten AM to, or six AM until ten PM. So it's pretty wide coverage.
Good movement.
And they're doing a great job with the co-response and our officers going out with them. They're able to take a lot of the strength of our patrol officers, including the mental health and crisis-related calls, where social workers really shine, right?
So this is a resource for police officers or the public?
For the public, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
How do, how do, how do we arrange to cover the times that they're not on duty?
So they're still available for call out, and they have one phone assigned to a supervisor. Anytime there is no specific coverage, so that supervisor will get ahold of the collateral team that's on duty that time, and they call out there for a responsive meeting.
But the goal is to have them work twenty-four seven. Absolutely. Because it's, it's heartbreaking to see somebody in crisis in the middle of the night and say, sorry, we just don't have any type of service for you.
Yeah, it's kind of weird. Mental health doesn't work on a schedule.
Right, it's not nine to five. Right.
So you mentioned that there was five that are communities or, or NPI.
Um, I think so. Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Well, I don't think so.
I haven't seen the new.
You are a social worker sometimes. Do you guys incentivize some of that? If they're communities of color, just like.
No, no.
Right now, they're just trying to recruit anyone they can fill the vacancies, but we can definitely look at that as well.
Yeah.
And there could be issues with employment and incentivizing that. So you got to be a little careful. I don't do employment. I know just enough about it, but I might get myself in trouble. I know there's some.
Divergent.
Equality, it could be, yeah, they were saying it's.
Yeah, and first of all, it has to be available and incentivized language. So if you do speak a language, rap hard, it's, but if you, but it's really.
You've got to be careful.
Yeah.
Yes.
I.
Yeah.
Char, if you're asking those kinds of.
Yeah, I'm just friends with, I'm attorneys, say your stories, and your basics.
But language, we can, that's, that's skills.
Good question. Okay. Any other questions on the mental health and co-responder role? Doing well? Thank you for your support, Valina. Let's go to the next one. This is a recommendation on the police civilian response team, PCRT. You know, we always love our acronyms. That's what it stands for. When we were going through 2020 and 2021, you know that our, we lost about ninety officers at the High Water Point. And so there was, there was some direction given to look at civilians to see if they can't join us and take some of these low-level crimes, and some of these different calls that we go on, because we still have to go on the low-level ones. And so the recommendation was made, we have hired, well, first off, you remember Lieutenant Mason Givens, who was over at CLIA? You've met him. He's talked to you about body worn cameras and things like that, break-in. He's been selected to supervise, select and supervise and train this new team. So that's his new job. He, we're now looking to hire twelve civilians. We've had applications in, and I think they've started.
They've started.
Backgrounds. So we want to have those twelve civilian response personnel, our team in place in January. We'll have to put them through some training, and then we're going to have them on the street hopefully in March.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are they to carry the office or?
No, they will go to lineups. They'll be, they'll be assigned to different areas of the city, but they'll, they'll. No, they will go to lineups. They'll be, they'll be assigned to different areas of the city, but they'll, they'll go to a lineup with the officers. I don't, I didn't want them to be separate. I wanted them to be part of patrol. So they'll go to the lineups, but they'll, they'll respond, you know, on calls.
They'll, they'll be given a guideline on what kind of calls they respond to.
But it won't.
Yeah. You know, to know when to call and say, hey, if someone gives me a vacancy, I need to use responses outside of that.
Are they students?
Right, or civilians.
Okay.
That's just between neighbors.
Okay.
But they'll have a uniform, they'll have a radio. They'll know how to call for help if they need it, but they'll be working with those officers day in and day out. So I think it'll be a good, good way to put that team into what we're trying to do.
Are they gonna be receiving the same sort of cultural sensitivity training as the other officers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Quite a few of them may already be familiar with that. We have had retired officers that have been in the U.S. And some dispatchers.
Records.
Records.
So people who aren't in the culture and understand who have wanted to be in this already are interested in this new position because they actually will be out there on the streets, but just in different, a little easier.
So we're well on our way. Great suggestion. And hopefully we'll have them rolling on in March. Do. Another suggestion was to, to develop a position within the department. It's called the BCEO, the Business Community Engagement Officer. Now, that officer's job is to work with the businesses, not so much in a call response. I've got a problem here on the radio. They come over and take, you know, take the call. They're the fixer. They go there and see what the issue is and how we fix it so we don't have to keep, keep going back over and over and over. So they work with the businesses, the security teams. And the officer that's been selected is Andrew Salilaboo. A great guy. He's doing fantastic work. The business community loves him. But that, that position is hired and staffed and it's working right now. Any questions on any of those?
Hey, Mike, this is, this is even. I just, I just wanted to express to the, the other commissioners that I did, I did sit in on some of the interviews for those civilian response, I'm not, uh, community outreach officers. And I was impressed with dedication to service and the number of answers about problem solving, maybe ongoing issues that are repeat calls and just a desire to serve the community. Several live in Salt Lake and wanted to be a part of this, because excited about this program in Salt Lake City. So that, pretty impressive candidate pool. I don't know who ultimately got a job offer. But it was, it was neat to sit down on those interviews and understand their attitudes on why they wanted to be there. So I think that's a great foundation to that program. Once again, I way on board with this. I think it's a, a great program.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time for being on that, that hiring. That's awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I would like to see someone from our commission be able to continue to help out if we can.
Oh, yeah.
That hiring process would be great.
It's an ongoing thing, not one at a time.
Fantastic.
No, always. Okay, next slide. That one. What's that?
Those are the only lessons.
What about? Oh, man, okay. I got my slides out over. All right, so those are, those are the recommendations that we have completed this year. Great recommendations and they're, they're bringing value every day to our department. Here is the next recommendations that are in progress. Okay? The first is for request, requesting funding for crisis intervention training. Remember how when we started to look at what we had within the department? We found that not all of our officers were CIT, crisis intervention trained. And so we went through, we found out who hadn't been through, because we hired a lot of laterals for a few years. A lot of those laterals came from other organizations that didn't go through that forty hour of training. So we had to go back and catch them up. So we needed some money and time to, to hire part-time to fill those classes. Because when you take twenty, thirty cops off the street, you've got a backfill. Somebody's got to do that work. So I think the commission authorized the funding to do that. I think we went through five or six CIT academies. We're happy to report. Next slide. We have, as of November twenty twenty-two, five hundred and thirty-five total officers and sergeants have been trained. Out of five ninety-seven. Bear in mind, we're down forty-seven people, so we have a few more officers, including some new recruits. But again, this is an ongoing process of identifying those who haven't been trained, making sure we keep them current and making it a requirement for all of our academies. It's part of the academy now. So when you go through and, and are trained in law enforcement, the last week is usually CIT training. Again, thank you for your support of that. The next one is the school resource officers, the MOU. We're still working on that. That's a work in progress.
Oh, yes.
There's a lot of, a lot of good conversations. And we're working with the school district to move that forward. With everything that has happened through the pandemic and, and a lot of vacancies who we've had. We, we, we pulled back. We used to have ten SROs in the school and we're down to five and one sergeant, so six. Now, we want to have ten. That's what we want to get. But in the meantime, we, we have augmented the SROs with, if there's problems or issues at some of these schools, they can always patrol or respond. The gang unit has stepped in to fill some of those gaps. The bike units have helped out. We also have, and I know we've talked about this, the Promising Youth Program. Ashley Fletcher and her advocates, we now have funded, we used to have a lot of grant funding. It was really based on those grants and those grants are running out, but we have four full-time advocates in the schools funded by the, by the city. So she has a cadre of advocates in the schools working, so it's kind of a hand in glove situation. SROs work very close with the Promising Youth Program to help those young individuals to make it off track a little bit, back on track and, and into some of the programs that we have. So anything I want to add? Any questions? Commissioner Hall, I know that.
I know we had kind of, not a full recommendation, but tossed around the idea of, of a specific team, not just a large, I guess, you, you know, a specific group of officers who are trained specifically for adolescents and youth. And I don't, I think you and I have talked about it kind of off the record of a specific group that would, that's specifically trained in, in how youth develop and some of their fifteen-year-old years. And to be kind of that all-call kind of group to support SROs. Because I don't know, I mean, hopefully to be able to fill all ten roles for those schools. But to have that as kind of a backup on the weekends or after school hours.
Yes.
And I don't know what kind of work has been done on that. I know it's not a, a formal recommendation. It's something just kind of tossed around as an idea.
What, I've talked to Sergeant Chairlink and I think you guys know him. He's the sergeant over the SROs. And what he's trying to do is identify, as, as staffing levels come up, we're gonna fill some of those positions. But it does take a special individual to do that type of work. Wants to work that closely with youth. I mean, it's a great job. A lot of people love it. Yvette was a great SRO.
Right, and I worry about standard patrol officers who are used to doing the adults.
Right.
And some of these young people who aren't at that level.
Yeah, so I think, I think Sergeant Chairlink is going to pull the list out and find out who would really like to maybe come and try, put their name in for that job. And then we're gonna look for some overtime monies to help augment some of those, those officers on a collateral-type basis. Put them in some of the schools with full-time SROs. Make sure we have the right people in that job. And then as we fill those positions, they'll probably come from that list.
Because I prefer to have somebody who's more familiar with adolescent development responding to those calls than the standard patrol officer. No offense to the standard patrol officers. I'm sure they do a fine job, but it does take a special person to deal with a fifteen-year-old who's acting like a fifteen-year-old with one problem.
Yeah. Yep. So that one is still, we're still working on, but I appreciate your suggestions and we'll keep that in mind. Next. Did we finish that?
This.
Yes. Yep. Okay, and you want that one?
Oh, sure. So the next recommendation was attempted modifier any process with regard to the body worn camera. So there were, as all of you know, there was body worn camera ordinance that was passed since we that designated what we were required to release to the mayor's office and to the city council. So we currently comply with all of the orders on that city ordinance. We haven't had any issues with that to date. There was also a recommendation that we shared with this commission, any incidents that go to internal affairs or compliance of misuse in proper use or no use at all, body worn camera. I think we recorded on it last time, but just to touch on it here again. To date, there have been no incidents reported to internal affairs of improper use or misuse of the body worn camera. So we'll get there. Um, I think that's all about the idea process. Are there any questions? Yeah, we covered that last time. Yeah.
And then.
Good recommendations.
Yep, fantastic. And then you also recommended training for our law enforcement officers based on DEI diversity, equity, and inclusion. As many of you know, we reported that we've met with three of the groups that were able to present to us how they felt they could teach officers about DEI. One of those was Legal Equity Advocates. We did a phenomenal presentation and definitely brought their culture and their experience to the table. Same, the True Empowerment was a, a group out of Chicago. Also had law enforcement background in their family as well, so they'd be able to relate really well to our officers. And then Equality Utah, she did a phenomenal job. And I think brings a very diverse background and wealth of information on how to deal with specifically the LGBTQ plus community. And our officers could definitely benefit from that as well. So in discussions with the committee, everybody with that, I think we've decided that it would be nice if we could mesh all three of the groups together and come up with one over our training for our officers. As well as to find somebody who, all three of them really touched on the history of diversity and equity in policing or, or lack thereof in policing. So it was decided that we would reach out to retired Sacramento police chief, Han.
Yeah.
To see if he would be willing to come to events, speak to our officers about the history of policing and how it has evolved throughout time.
So yeah, Chief, yeah, Chief Han is a colleague and friend of mine. And Yvette and I had the privilege of being in a conference where he did this presentation. And it was amazing. I mean, he went back and talked about policing, the genesis of policing in this country, how policing was kind of used to impose the will of, you know, politicians and things that they wanted to accomplish. They talked, he talked about slave patrols. He talked about some of the unrest in southern states that Pastor Davidson was very much about.
Yeah.
Uh, but he talks about it all, he, he takes it all the way from, from those slave patrols all the way up to modern policing. And when Yvette and I were sitting there and he talked about, he said, in Salt Lake City. I was like, what? Salt Lake City? He said, there was a restaurant up on Island Drive. And it was, it was, it was.
Coon Chicken Inn.
Yeah. And I about fell out of my chair and I was like, you kidding me? Salt Lake City? Now I'm Googled. And it's like, oh my gosh. And yeah, he talked about, there was that restaurant here in Salt Lake City and it was just eye-opening that systemic racism is, is really kind of everywhere. And you have to be aware of it. And so, but he brings it right up to where, to the neighborhoods of Sacramento that he grew up in. And it was amazing. And I think coming from a, a, a police chief, he, he, law enforcement will look at that and go, yeah, I can see that, you know? And so I called him yesterday and I talked to Greg and I said, hey, love to have you do that. Now, he's, he's moved on and doing other things. And there, there's no way we can bring him up here to do it twenty-seven times. So I call, I said, hey, would you be willing if we flew you up here to Salt Lake City? We rented a professional studio. We videotaped this, made a really nice production and talked about and, and did this. We could actually have that in-house. We could do our academies. We could do community events. We could do it for our in-service training. Said, yeah. He said, let me put some numbers together. I think it'd be fantastic. And then I told him that Pastor Davis actually has some of the memorabilia out of that, that restaurant. You have two chicks, you have a menu. And he just like, are you kidding me? I says, I gotta meet him. So anyway, that's the plan. We're kind of excited about that. But that would be a wonderful lead-in to all these things we're gonna talk about. To have him kind of say, hey, let's talk for a minute, officers, and then kind of just set the stage.
I like that. I like that thought.
To add to what the chief lieutenant called said, if there are certain communities that weren't represented, they were open to reaching out to community members and fill those gaps. And then have those personal experiences and then compensate them as well.
Yeah.
So there will be a cost to it. And so we may come back to the commission with those costs. But I want to do this really nice. If we're gonna do it, let's do it.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Get you a cameo spot on there.
Deserve it. Save a lot. Headaches, you know.
Any questions on that? You like that?
Yeah.
Have we heard back from our, our training groups? Are we able to, to coming together to do this training?
Yeah, and I think it was coming from.
Yeah, we're still reaching it.
So once they do, then we're meeting again in the next, not, not next, in two weeks. Yeah, in two weeks and then we'll have a update as well.
Can we have access to one?
What?
Yeah, I want to see it. And I read about it. I'd love to see a presentation.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want to see the presentation?
I'm saying right now, yes.
I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll, I'll see if I can get him on the, on the line and have him do a course live.
Oh.
We could do it here, maybe in January. We'd love it. It's amazing.
He, he actually told us he teaches this, this course into all of their basic academy classes. So they come into their, because they do the, the post one for the state, but then when they come into his department, he was teaching these classes to the recruit classes.
That's weird.
So getting that national perspective as well as the local perspective will be nice in all the training.
Yeah, but he's, he's gonna dial it into Salt Lake City with some of that stuff. Excited about that. Okay, next slide. And we kind of touched on this. This is some of the recommendations that we're still working on. Call the version. Again, when people call in, there are certain calls that law enforcement shouldn't be going on. But sometimes there's nobody else to go, and so we kind of get tapped to go do those calls. So we're working with Steven Meyer. I think he met with you guys and talked with you about the script and how they're, they're looking for different ways. The civilian response team is gonna play an important part in that. We do a lot of telephonic reports. Again, we have officers on overtime. We have officers that are hurt or injured that can work and take telephone calls. Last month, they took over fourteen hundred telephonic responses. So like every call you can take off the board that the cops don't have to go on in the cars. It saves them time and lets them focus on those high priority calls. So the response times go on down. We're, we're truly reducing violent crime, crime in our community. That, that's gonna be very, very helpful to us.
I know records was a representative, Tushir was representing something, is it Tushir? I may not have a Tushir. I'm trying, I'm trying to remember from twenty twenty. We're gonna statewide, help the version. Bill. That would create a separate number for mental health calls. I don't know if it's been in contact with you guys or.
Is it the nine eighty?
That's suicide prevention.
That's suicide prevention. There would have been.
But it's like that.
Separate number for mental health calls altogether. I don't know if those T-shirt was represented about West Valley. He was focusing on that in a huge way. And I was following his bills, I want to say during the twenty twenty legislative session. But I haven't seen anything come on yet, but the legislative session hasn't started just yet. But I know that was one who knows my intention to you. And I don't know if you've been involved in any of that yet.
Not yet. I'm sure we'll, we'll come to it.
Yeah. I mean, it was, of course, it was all because of the massive fiscal bill that went along with it, the fiscal note that went along with it. Because it would have created a whole new system. Because it would have created a whole new separate people to take those calls. A whole separate line. And the, the messaging and marketing to get that line out there. It was, it was a big, big hole. And I think it was, it died in one of the committees because of that fiscal moment.
Oh.
But I know that was something that I saw statewide going on there.
That's a great idea. Let us know if you hear anyone.
Let me see if I can find that. Because that was a really, I was really excited for that.
And then another thing that is still in progress, but I think Director Myers talked about, we don't have a script for mental health. But his dispatchers are trained to listen for key words and phrases that indicate somebody is in crisis to have further conversation and explore what options may be available rather than just sending them to us.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember that name. Sorry, it will come to me after the meeting.
And then we come to the red dot. Yellow is in progress. Those are, those are the two that we haven't been able to touch on. That, I mean, but that doesn't mean we're not going to do it. It just means we have a whole year to look at what we want to do. One is the advanced accreditation opportunities. And that was through CLIA. We, we are still in the certified by CLIA. We're working on our, our standard certification. There was a conversation about moving it up a level. We're probably going to need a little bit of time and work to get there. So I will keep you posted on that one. And then, and the second was the, the implied bias survey. We talked a little bit about that. That, we need to figure out who's going to do that. That shouldn't be us. I think that was somebody from the outside, maybe a university or an academia doing that for us. So if, if anybody has any ideas who could do that for us, we're more than willing and happy to participate.
Well, there are two people that I can think of that the U, one is Dr. Williams Spitt. And the other is Dr. Ronald Coleman. Coleman is retired, so he's likely to have more time.
Okay. You can make a contact for us? Sure. Okay.
What was the purpose of the survey again?
Implied, the last one that's up here, review of the implied bias survey.
For the officers.
And taking a look at that survey that was done.
Yeah.
And making it relevant locally.
The officers know what kind of racism is happening within the department. But we may not be able to hear. There are officers that we did talk to informally before experiencing bias outside of the department. And I know this is a state, I want to say it was back in New Jersey. And we implied bias survey done with that department. Sure, there was quite a bit of racism happening within the department among the officers. And our, one of the commissioners on, our feeling was if the officers are experiencing bias within the department, it's supposed to be favorable for the entire populace if the biases are there. So that was one of the, the reviews. Is there bias occurring among the officers? How comfortable are officers of color within the department? Are they doing the function and do they feel like they are part of the department, part of the team? Or are they experiencing racism themselves? And so that's what the implied bias survey is for.
And it's anonymous.
Anonymous, yes. Yeah, so that's why we want someone outside of the department to do it. So there's no fear of repercussions at any level. We won't know the repercussions unless we take any measures.
Exactly.
And that will go to whoever in, who wants to handle that and let us know.
So that'll be, there'll be a cost to that as well. That's, that's a big undertaking.
That is a big cost. I, we do, I still believe it is an important cost.
Definitely.
Yeah.
That should be one of the.
Yeah, that one, and I think that needs to be a priority cost. Many of the, the city says.
So if Commissioner Davis, I'll make a contact, we'll contact those, those individuals. Kind of tell them what we're looking for. We'll come back with the cost. I'll be the first to hear. Okay. So there you have it, commissioners. Twenty-eight recommendations. We have six pending.
Thank you.
We're still working on it. And I want to thank you all, each of you, for, for your effort and your time for your recommendations. And I think together, we're making this a better police department, better serve our community. So thank you.
We want to thank you, chief. You completed a lot. No lip service. You said you were going to do stuff and you did.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
The women and men of this department, they're the ones that are doing the hard work. But thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was a lot because of you guys.
Yeah.
Not going to lie. We looked at all our recommendations, my love. If you ask us for what, it's going to take to make an equitable police department. Here you go. Well, thank you. Does anybody online have any questions for the chief or any of the officers here? All right, seeing none, thank you so much. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time and your attention here. The next item on our agenda is to approve the final end of year report. Do we still have form?
Yes, we do. And we sent it out. And we just wanted to note that we will make a change to align every, all of the things that the, the chief has reported on so that it aligns on the, the report. And then the second piece is, the only thing we added was the recommendation for the $20,000 for the, sorry, it's late at night. For the culturally responsive therapists for those families who are involved in a negative beliefs interaction. And then that would be, yeah, so they supported $20,000 to be given to the victim advocates team. And then they will disseminate the funds for that further. So just to let you all know that we're just putting it in there. And I don't know, we'll send it to, we'll transmit it. So if you all want to wait to the next year fiscal cycle or if you wanted to make an amendment, it's $1,000, just to let you know that they get supported.
Okay.
And it would come out of the, they did want it to institutionalize it. But if we wanted to do a, if this commission supporting that, we use the funds and R and B budget for the first year and then chief.
Budget for?
Yeah, for the next cycle. To try to institutionalize that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
So that's the only addition that we need from what everyone has seen over the last couple months.
Well, that's great. Then we really just get to vote on the end of your report, right?
Yeah, and then we'll turn, we'll give it to the mayor who turns the need to speak out.
Fantastic. All right, does, has everybody had a chance to review that end of year report? Do you have any amendments, changes to that report that are needed? Do we have a motion to approve that end of year report?
Motion.
You have a second?
I have a second.
Fantastic. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I know, right? Thank you all. Okay, subcommittee chair updates. I know from school safety, I know updates. It's in other hands right now that MOU, we've sent off our, I've spoken with with members of the city about what changes we'd like to see. And now it's just in the half the negotiators.
And we suspended most of the meetings, the meetings until the year. And what we shall get out to everyone is the new cycle. And we will let the SOCPD know what that schedule is at the top of the year.
And trainings of committee.
And since I'm leaving, what about the chairs?
Yeah, and then they will renew all the chairs.
They will take the chairs.
Yes.
So then the chairs, where are we going? Farewell.
Farewell.
You can't go anywhere.
Okay, so any updates from training or policy practices?
Well, the only thing from training is what Chief and SOCPD already mentioned.
Perfect.
The selection of those groups.
Hey, and then application for me that wasn't even as needed. And I believe we do have.
We have about six people in the pipe trying to fill in for all of those that are leaving. Two of them are young people, so are excited that they're high schoolers.
Good.
And.
They have energy.
Uh, high, high schoolers and then a University of Utah. Or well, under 22.
Recent grad. Yeah, save energy and time. That's great.
Yeah. So we'll bring in some new, new perspectives next, next month.
That's great.
Oh, as soon as that invites and consent. So we just have to wait for it.
Awesome. Okay, well, then I guess that brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is really sad, which is a farewell to our outgoing commissioners. And the people on our list are Reverend Franz Davis, Steve Andrew Warden, Snetha Eldridge, and Steve Johnson. I must say, all of you, it has been an absolute pleasure working with all of you and honor working with all of you. I feel absolutely blessed to have been able to work with you guys these past two years. I really am a lucky, lucky woman to have this opportunity. And I think the city is richer for the work that you have done. I don't think we could have asked for a better role of people. And I really, really appreciate your service. I don't think words can convey how much I appreciate the work you've put in and the service you have given to this committee to make this police department and the city a better place. And I'm going to cry if someone stops talking.
But it shouldn't be a sad farewell. It ought to be a rejoicing farewell. Because Steve and I and Al Juwedin will stay in touch and continue to be available to help wherever we can. But to get some fresh blood will be a good idea.
It is.
Yeah.
And you're a new one. You have fresh perspectives always, but man, you guys, you're a hard act to follow.
You are.
All y'all are a hard act to follow, I got to say.
You're thick and thin. You've been there, folks. Thank you. I appreciate you. We have like an merit status where they're still like retire their jerseys, you know? You're.
Well, you are on the shortlist for the community members if you need to call on to bill it for the training. So. I just want to thank everyone too for all of their services for working with you all these last couple of years. And I will say that felt heavy lift, especially you all assembly during 2020 through the pandemic and then laying the foundation for the, for the, for this entirety. I think that we will be seeing the recommendations that you all made. A lot of what we're going to see, the changes in the next, I would say, the next five to 10 years because of this group. So really appreciate those perspectives and thank you from the mayor's office as well and our team.
And I'm here for all of you who need help. You're on my shortlist if you need help. Always here for you guys. Well, I, I think that brings us to the end of our agenda. I don't see a need for the closed session as anyone else does.
Could I, could I just make a brief comment, Nicole?
Of course. Yes, you do.
Thank you for those kind words. And I do just want to, the conversation with the commission about the situation that I'm in. So I, based on being a member of this commission, I also serve on a board to distribute COVID funds to small businesses. It is a requirement to be, in order to be on that board, I have to be on the commission. So my options are to leave that project just as it's getting going or there's caveat in the ordinance allows commissioners to continue after their appointment ends as long as the position has not been. So thank you for sending me off so kindly. And I'm asking if I can stay for a couple more months to fill that. So I'm a little under the weather. Hopefully that was coherent. But I guess that's the question. Would you guys mind having me around a couple more months so I can finish up another commitment to get that money out to those deserving businesses?
Well, do we have a motion to have Commissioner work this down a couple of months to allow him to stand aboard that, to allow him to, to fund two businesses and lend aid from COVID funding?
I would make a motion to that effect that we allow him to stay on until his work is done on the other committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was gonna, I was, that was the most difficult question. I was going to offer to go offline.